Yeah.
Well, there's nothing that anymore. And my kids play soccer and yeah, like my grandkids more.
Oh, I guess not like the game.
Like.
Sure, they keep it going.
Put them on a time limit. Like, like when we're in Dillon play, they used to play, and they go like six innings or two hours, and we never got to six innings.
Oh.
Yeah, because they just, they can't.
If you have the last game though, and it's still a little bit light out, those coaches will keep it going.
No, those coaches are nuts. That's it.
Zoom's not on yet, yeah.
All these sweeps at all.
Yeah. Funny. I mean, I think I can get by without it.
Probably shouldn't say I'd be here, but you did.
It's two goes in the sixth grade, it's gonna be a lot harder. What's the time for you to put on? What time do you play? Or what? Okay, no, we were the later.
It's so funny.
Yeah.
We know you like it.
You all sat there. Yeah, I was just wondering.
Yeah. The first.
Sixth grade, okay. Okay, so it's like, yes, so.
Yes, I'm not the only one. You brought your own?
I do, just as a backup.
Yeah.
Kind of you're convincing yourself. I don't know, I don't know if he's a nice guy or a scumbag.
Neil, you know you're tech guy.
I know, right? Yeah.
And Neil, he's actually pretty cool. He does all some.
Unplug it, plug it back in.
On the, on the opportunity, we find the actual monitors.
Oh, there's no buttons? Rolled in here in two wheels too, like got Anna from MAP.
That's what I did, I dropped the call off, I got stuck in traffic, and then I was like, I thought I had 10 minutes, and I didn't have any five, and I was like, running out the door. Talked it, though, we work out the kinks.
So you guys all working practice.
And, and you have an extra agenda?
Yeah, she came up to the door all day.
Um, here, just.
I'm on, I'm on.
Are you on? Okay.
I, I just standard.
You can use this one, come on.
I'm on that one.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So are we, uh, we're up until you want to set it to go, will you start? Uh, yes, sir. Is that me wrong?
We're good to go.
Okay. So we're kicking off the Medfield School Committee Public Meeting. I think we should start with the roll call. Good night, there.
Michelle Kirk be here.
Neil Brum here.
Will Horn here.
Being here. Um, so we will start off with public input. Uh, members of the, and we don't have anybody in the room. It's like so, we'd only be on Zoom. Uh, members of the public, be welcome to comment during public input through Zoom. Please raise your Zoom hand if you would like to do so. We ask that you keep your camera on when making a Zoom comment. And that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes. And only on topics under the purview of the school committee. So, shall I do anything?
Yeah, we have one person online, so if that person wants to say anything, please raise their hand.
Anything, please raise your hand.
There's nobody. Okay. So then, um, we'll go into the consent agenda. And, um, we have the approval of the regular meeting minutes from our December fourteenth mitting meeting. As well as donations, uh, which are listed out, and I will beat them through. Two thousand nine dollars, three cents from Bryn and Barrett Enterprises. For the high school gift account. Eight hundred fifty dollars from the Blake PTO, uh, the Blake gift account for the iPad and Lightning grant. Eight hundred twenty-five dollars from the Blake PTO, PTO. The Blake, uh, to be deposited in the Blake gift account for the sixth grade Pyramid and Pharaoh's Grant. Five hundred sixty dollars from the Blake PTO, uh, to be deposited in the Lake gift account for the circuit cutting machine grant. Seven thousand five hundred dollars from MCPE to be deposited in the Lake gift account for the water bottle, bottle fillers. And two thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-one cents from Shutterfly to be deposited in the Gale Street gift account. And then is that, I think that's a separate line. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, okay. Yep, and an additional two thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-one cents from Shutterfly. Be deposited into the memorial. One thank you for, uh, for those donations, and unless, does anybody want to call any of those items out? Presenting, and, uh, the nomination to the. Uh, is there a nomination to the items?
Some of it.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I abstain, as I was not here for the twelve fourteen meeting. That's why I didn't move the vote.
Okay, thank you. Um, the first item for new business is the tech request to modify capital reserve and Dr. Martin. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your materials, you have the memo that came from the executive director of tech. Explaining what the objective is, the reason for, uh, what I want to reset. So, there's two things you can do with this. One is that you can take no action, and after forty-five days, it becomes, uh, as if you did take action. Or you can just take action and see if they can vote to approve this. So, uh, what tech is trying to do is increase their capital reserve fund. So tech is, is different from the clever, from a school district or, or town, because they have their own, uh, capital reserve fund, which they need to build up. And what they're trying to do is look at the possibility in the future of, uh, buying an educational facility. And wall hole. And, um, they, they need some renovations and upgrades to that facility. And whether or not they're gonna stay there, I think they have maybe three or four years left on their lease. So this would allow them to increase the capacity of their capital fund, reserve fund from seven fifty to three point five million. Uh, I would just remind the committee that, uh, accepted this earlier in the year, and the very same thing, they increased their reserve on, uh, the votes going to approve that as well. So I would ask them to approve it as presented, and if you have questions, I can try to address that camp. But, um, basically, two-thirds of the member districts have to approve this, so they can revise their capital plan. That's, um, what this table on for.
So did, so we raised it to seven fifty previously?
At some point.
I see.
Yeah, I don't remember when that was, but accepted theirs this year.
Oh, I see.
Wasn't.
How would they, so are they just reallocating funds, or would they be, we'd be helping raise the limit, and then they would be doing a funding cycle to get up to the three point five million?
So what they do is they have, at the end of each fiscal year, if we have money left over, we return that to the town. Uh, if they have money left over that goes beyond twenty-five percent of what their budget is, they return it to the member district. Or with hundred and twenty-five percent, they get to keep that as their free cash, so it's free, and they can put that money into reserve. So, they'll take some of that money and allocate it, they have OPEB, like those that the town has the insurance, they allocate money to there. So, it's almost like its own entity in terms of where they fund it, and it's funded all by tuitions, if they don't get any money from the state. So that's why one of the provisions was, uh, to provide funding for the least common area maintenance when enrollment took a low expectation. So, they build their budget on a set number of kids, and then if they are below that, they could use some of this money to, to build some of their facilities. Well, it doesn't, uh, pay teachers, et cetera, and then facility.
Right, okay.
And one of the things that they're doing, uh, is what wall hole is building in the middle school. So tech is going to, um, rent some space from wall hole, because they have two programs outside the facility. They have Tech Phoenix and Tech, Tech High School, that they're currently in other facilities. So they're gonna use the, um, the middle school wall hole to, uh, once that's the new school go up. For those programs and other collaborative work to do that as well. So, wall hole's really smart with that, they're doing a good job with, first of all, getting it funded, getting their building, but then using the existing building. Right? Any other questions? Are, are we, anyone opposed to vote on that? Okay.
Oh, move the, to approve the tech request to increase their capital fund to three point five million?
Second to vote.
And that's the money from us, probably, just so everyone's clear on that, there's no Medfield money.
I should, let me rephrase to call it, uh, possible capacity to three point five million.
Second, uh, vote.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, aye.
And unless you're assured. Dr. Martin, is there anything else since posting?
Uh, nothing else.
Okay. Great. So next up on the agenda is the two thousand twenty-three, uh, really a follow-up focused on student growth percentile. Yeah, so Christine, uh, is here, thank you for coming, Christine, and we're doing part two of the presentation that we did last time. Christine has done a real nice job putting together a presentation on, on the student growth percentile, which we alluded to last time, and we thought that it made sense to do a part two, and then part three would be later in the spring, in which we give you, uh, kind of what our plan is, what we're doing to address some of the issues that we found, or any, any problems or gaps that we found. So Christine, if you wanna, I hope you can start that off.
Just so the people at home can see. Hi, everyone, just give me one minute.
Uh, just one thing for the group, we don't always, um, you know, I think we're going through this in more detail than we have prior years. Part of that is driven by, uh, all of the, say, reporting, really data, even like the districts they could abuse. So I think it, it is worthwhile to take that second, uh, look at, at the, uh, more granular data. And, and then where we did talk about moving to a third one is more about, hey, more sometimes qualitative or, or other factors, hey, what did we find from all of this? That just, uh, Michelle and I were talking about that, and we raised a good point. We, we care deeply about, uh, you know, metrics such as this, but we also care about all the others. I, I don't want it to be like, uh, that, you know, we're gonna be so rigid focused on this week, you know, meeting activity. I mean, it's a good, a good measure and an important metric for our district, but we still wanna make sure we meet kids where they're at, where they are at, and, uh, support this social movement, or anything for beginning to do. I just think it's, you know, we've had this new tool, this MCAS Explorer tool, which really allowed us to, to get really deeper into the data, but also, uh, we're actually having a meeting on it tomorrow with leadership team, to involve the teachers in this process too. So I think that's really important, that we can look at it, but that, you know, the teachers that are delivering this curriculum and working with the kids directly, we'll be able to take a look at it too. So we're, we're happy about that.
Two seconds, I'm almost there. Okay, I'm online, and let me just share.
It must say to laugh.
It was, actually. It was, it was. One second. Um, see, and I think it's there.
That was her prep, that was her prep for the, there it is.
It's the Kennedy Center Honors, and Barry Gibb won the award, and so it's going through a little nostalgia there. Hi, everyone. Uh, thanks for that o- opportunity to meet with you today and to discuss student growth percentiles. As definitely, as Dr. Martin mentioned, we have a phenomenal tool, uh, in Open Access Explorer, and it allows, MCAS Explorer allows us to really delve deeply into data and in new and really interesting ways. So I'm really excited to show you some of the things that we've been doing with data. So today's presentation is focusing specifically on student growth data, and I wanted to talk a little bit about what that is. So, stu-, what is student growth percentile? Student growth percentiles measure the degree to which an individual student achievement has changed from prior years to the current year. And it compares students from this, uh, who, to, it compares students, uh, in the same grade who performed similarly in the past. So that's a lot of information, but let me explain specifically and break this down, and actually what it means. So, so what is student growth percentile? Uh, this is just a typical class, and every year MCAS is taken, and students receive various different scores across a class. It is not enough to do a year-to-year by comparison, because, because of the variability in data. It's just, it's not considered to be a really reliable measure. However, student growth percentile goes far into more depth than that. And what they do is in terms of creating cohorts or academic peer groups. So what happens is that when students receive their student growth percentile score, um, that, that year's score, as well as previous, up to two-plus years of previous data, are pulled in and a composite score is created. And that, those scores are placed, students are placed on a, a score between zero and ninety-nine. So it is really multiple years' worth of data, not just a single data point. And so they're grouped together in different groups. So for instance, you see two students in, in ninety-eighth percentile, uh, five in, in, in the ninetieth percentile. This just demonstrates how multiple years with their data are considered in terms of creating these cohorts or academic peers. And cohorts are not just something that's out of a classroom or a school, they're actually made up of students across the Commonwealth. So, in the case of a ninetieth percentile, the students perform better than ninety percent of other students within their same grade level across. So this is a really deep and meaningful number, because what it says is that it, it creates, it's not just a small N size. It's not just a classroom or a particular school or even a district. These are thousands upon thousands upon thousands of students that are placed within certain cohorts between zero and ninety-nine. And it provides a real in-depth apples-to-apples comparison unlike anything else that we have. So, performance is measured against students in the same percentile cohort. So it's not necessarily that student A and student B and sitting in the same classroom are compared. These are comparing students to other students who performed similarly in the last two-plus years. And their growth in terms of how they perform in the MCAS is compared. So in this example, for instance, the median's fifty percent. And students with high growth, for instance, are, score in the, their cohort is they're placed in the seventieth percentile, so they perform better than seventy percent. Um, and moderate would be fifty-six, or low growth would be thirty-nine. So again, this really in-depth, really rich dataset allows us to really look at student growth. But more importantly, it also looks at school and student group performance. And that really provides a deep, and now, uh, us, uh, enabled to, us to see a deep analysis of students and how they perform, whether it's within a school or within even a student group. So for instance, we can drill down and really look at, uh, student subgroups and see how individual students, as well as us as a district, perform against these other groups. So, student growth percentile can be broken down various ways, but just a, a rule of thumb is really thinking about it this way. Above sixty percent of student growth, anything above that's considered high growth, this is really high performance. Between forty and six, sixty percent's moderate growth, and below forty is about, is low growth. Medfield Public Schools expects fifty percent growth or higher for all our students, as well as our districts, our classrooms, as well as our subgroups. So that is a level that we're really focused on. Yep, I'm bringing it back.
Fifty percent or higher are in the growth category.
So that's typical growth, fifty percent is the actual average growth. So if, if, if a student is continuing on the same projection and, and.
Goes in that cohort.
Goes in that cohort. Their, 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 as, uh, better than fifty percent of, their performance is better than fifty percent of other of their peers. So it's right smack dab in the middle of their cohort. So we expect that or higher.
Their growth.
Their growth performance. Yes. How, how much they've learned, how much they've demonstrated knowledge from one year to the next.
Do the cohorts ever change? Like if a child's put in a, right, some random child goes in the cohort in like the first grade, you take them? Are you always all the way through, graduating?
No, they're recalibrated.
Okay.
So as they go with the new dataset, because it's previous years. years. So, about to show a set of data, and this is, again, these are snapshots from MCAS Explorer, unbelievable tool, and we're going to be looking at it from multiple different lenses, we're going to be looking at it from a district lens, then go down to a school lens, and then individual grade level lens, and then we're going to bring it back and compare us against other districts or, or like districts. So, this is our district viewpoint, a couple of things for you to really look at, and those are really highlighted in blue, you have that three different boxes, the rest are there for contextual reasons, always fairly important as well, but as a district, you can see our overall performance. The box on the left sees how we are compared to the state in terms of student growth percentile, the black dotted line is the state's student growth percentile versus ours, which is in blue right above that. The box in the middle talks about our average SGP across the district and ELA, and then you can see that's 55.5. Remember that the typical or the, the moderate growth is between 40 and 60%, and you can see that we're above that, we're within that range and definitely above that 50% mark that we've set in terms of our expectation for student growth. And the item on the left plots our schools in terms of that student growth, average student growth, and you can see there that 50% mark, all of our schools are above the 50% mark that we expect for our district. Here's those same scores in math, the same three items in math, you'll notice the left in terms of our comparison against the state, overall SGP is 52.3 in math across the district, and then again, you'll see SGP for each one of the schools that are well within that moderate growth range. So, I'm about to walk through each one of our schools that offers MCAS, and then first I'm going to start with the high school, and this is their ELA performance, and you can see a couple of really great things, one of which is our SGP is 56.5%, so definitely in that range, and you'll notice that we had an unusual, compared to the state dip, we actually had an unusual bend, but you can see that we are, as a school, above the state student growth percentile. Math, unbelievable performance, student growth percentile, anything above 60% is considered to be high growth, so our students performed in the student growth percentile of 63.1%. It's an unbelievable and a great number, and you can see it's well above this, the state average.
Okay, ask a question on a graph that's here, or should I wait till the end?
Go ahead, that's fine.
Um, am I, read that our growth percentile seems to be dipping over the last two years, even at a height during the pandemic?
That one, you will see, I've been trying to break this one down. If you look at every other one, it follows the state average, this is the only one that doesn't. The only thing I can say is that 2021, it was an unusual year.
Did we give the answers with the exam that year?
I haven't quite figured it out in terms of why that is, you will see every single else, and, and most of these, when you compare even other districts have similar, they'll all follow that same sort of pattern, showing the pandemic year dip.
Just.
If I figure it out, I will let you know. Okay.
But we're talking about growth here, too, not score.
Yeah.
So, here we are at Blake, and again, two things to see, you'll see that typical pattern that happens on the left, and then the student growth percentile, 54.9%, well within the moderate range of 40 to 60%, and that, again, for, for Blake ELA. And Blake math, Blake math, again, following the typical pattern, you'll see 45.7%, so that is in the moderate range, it is below the 50% range though, and so that's something that we're, we're focusing on now. Dale Street, similar pattern, 55.9%, definitely showing moderate growth for all, for, as an average across the students in Dale Street School who've taken the MCAS in ELA, and 57.3% in math. Here's the breakdown of each grade level, and this is something looking at three particular years, I prefer not to look at the 2021, given that it's the, the COVID year, the pandemic year, so looking at 2019, 2022, and 2023, and you can see by grade, the performance in terms of student growth percentile, how much a student has learned between one grade and the next grade, and you can see that we're, overall, we're in the, mostly in the, in the mid-50s throughout, we had phenomenal performance in grade seven, 69.2%, and there's an area of focus in, in ELA in eighth grade math, eighth grade ELA, that we need to, to focus and see exactly what happened in student growth percentile there. Math, similar story, a lot of 50s, some in the 40 range, but some, number 60s as well. Again, looking at how we, and I'll explain in a slide a little further on in terms of how we use these data, but you can see grade by grade showing student growth from one grade to the next, and you'll see that, notice, and there's also not a grade three, that's important to note, because that's the, the first year, and they need to show growth from the previous year. Area of focus you'll see is sixth grade and eighth grade math. Now, the power of this is, allows us to really look at our subgroup performance, these are groups of kids who we're looking at that have, that fit within certain demographic groups. What's great about this is that it allows us to look, because the N, the overall number that is considered within this cohort, it, even though we have, you'll see here with our EL, it's only an N of 13, but because the actual overall N is much larger, it allows us to have a really robust comparison in student growth percentile between our students who fit in that subgroup and students across the Commonwealth. And you'll see here that overall our subgroup performance is well within the moderate range, if not above that, and you'll see that here with IEP 504, right at the custom 50% mark, low income 58.8, and EL 64.2 in terms of performance from one year to the next.
EL, the old, like, EL, is that English language learning?
Yes, yes, sorry about that, sorry. And then it allows us to also break it down by race, and you'll see the performance here across the race, and you will see that we're in the mid-to-upper 50s, if not low 60s, in terms of our student growth by subgroup by race. The data also breaks down first language, and you'll see here, again, performance generally is very strong in terms of, in the mid-to-upper 50s, and with those, with English as a, a first language, as well as Spanish as a first language, we are focusing on, so that Portuguese is a first, is a first language. Notice the N is 11, so it's a small N, but it's important for us to, to take a look exactly to see the student growth, and that would be an area of focus. So, these final data slides show us the district comparison, and I apologize for the small number, with the small dots, but let me explain what that represents, because it's really the overall pattern, that's the key piece. We're compared by, DESI puts us into groups that are based on our demographic, it's our size of our district, as well as our overall demographics in terms of SES, in terms of population makeup, things like that, and so we're compared quite often to this group of, of 11 different districts. We also added in, Jeff and I really wanted to consider two other districts that we consider to be our peers, even though DESI does not consider them part of our peers, and that is Dover Sherburne, as well as Westwood, and so those are data that are plotted in terms of their student growth percentage, uh, percentage growth compared to ours, and you can see where we are in terms of, ELA is the graph on the left, and we're well in the middle in terms of where they are, the average SGP is above the 50% mark, and you'll notice that the, the other axes in terms of average score, we're in that above that 500 mark, and then with our, our math scores as well, we're in that middle range in terms of comparison grade three to eight compared to our peers. And this is another look at grade 10 alone, and that indicates, again, you'll see our performance against other districts, we want to be in that top-right quartile, that's exactly where we are, and you can see that happening with our ELA, and we are actually in the top-right-hand portion in math as well. So, here's the, the why of this whole thing, how do we use these data? The information is really a powerful tool, because again, it shows an apples-to-apples comparison, and also allows us to look deeply at different subgroups, even though in some cases the N, the, the number of students within that group is quite small. So, how we use that is that we overall are, are aimed to achieve, and we expect to achieve 50% growth or higher, and so we, we look at these data, and we look at our growth in terms of what is working well, in terms of, of student growth, and what areas that we need to focus on, and we're allowed to really go deeply by school, by grade level, by subgroup, and we're able to look at and have discussions and really look at our practices in order to improve our overall performance, and how do we do that? So, we've been having conversations specifically, for instance, looking at our curriculum alignment between our curriculum and what is taught in the MCAS and the overall frameworks, which reflects, with, the MCAS reflects the frameworks, as well as instructional strategies, and it also allows us targeted focus, we can look at the subgroup data, for instance, and look specifically in how we can support specific subgroups, whether it's at grade level or a particular demographic group that falls within that subgroup. And with that, that is just a, a look and reflection of overall, one aspect of this overall dataset that we have and how we use it. More than happy to answer your questions or, or any sort of reactions that you may have.
So, what action items do you take away with your teams out of this data? Like, obviously, for instance, you know, the glaring one is the Blake math scores, right? Particular eighth grade, right? I think.
Yeah, so we've already had, and we're in the process of that, and met with every department chair that is impacted by MCAS, so it's, it's math, science, math, science, and ELA, and in this case, in terms of this student growth percentile, as well as overall MCAS performance, we start with, we, we project the data, and we all sit as a group, and that is the department chair and me, as well as the building principals, and we start with something as simple as, what do you see, what do you notice, what do you wonder? And then we all start working together in terms of, what are the phenomena that we're seeing in terms of areas of strength, and what is areas of focus, and at that point, we're really working together in terms of what, how can we can explain that, and what adjustments that we need to do. So, for instance, for in math, we're talking a little bit, we're talking about curriculum alignment, how exactly, what is being taught, and how aligned are, is the curricula to the overall MCAS, to, to really look at.
Do you get the, do you still get the itemized responses back to the group, the grouping, so you know which areas were not met?
That's our, yeah, that's our tomorrow, it's true, your timing, yeah, so we have our, we're doing our data dives, we do it with our leadership team, we do an overall data dive with the entire leadership team, and then we'll go deeply with individual department chairs, etc., with the department chairs, I've been working with them already on that, but this is another way of looking at it, for sure, but yes, absolutely, the state is great, in most cases, they provide examples and, and they show exactly the question, so we're able to really match in terms of our student performance and the actual question itself, and align to the standard. So, we have tools that we've self-developed, actually, also, which are really powerful, and I can't wait to show at a future, a future meeting perhaps, is that how we can identify these different standards, and then show how we connect that to the curriculum.
Looking at the frequency of when they show up in MCAS, over the last three years, multiple years, and then what standard it is, and the sample question look like from that, so we're, and we, Christine and I have just, we're planning on our meeting for tomorrow, we've looked at it, and there's just definitely a couple of holes in the curriculum that are, there are questions that are coming up almost every year, and our kids are doing not as well as they should do, that's a curriculum issue for us, so we just need to make sure that we're filling that gap and making sure our students know that, because if they don't know that, they can't help.
Yeah, and it seems like grade eight is the, like, whatever happens between seven and eight in that preparation, that gap of time, is clearly the, you know, the outlier. And did the benchmark, benchmark assessments reflect similarly as the MCAS scores, I guess is my question?
Yeah, and those are, those are discussions that we're, we're having now in terms of breaking down and looking at the, the different standards, standard-based performance that happens in the middle school, and lining those up in terms of not only how the students are performing against the benchmarks and the regular, the regular assessments that happen, but also the frequency, is it something that we're teaching one and done, or is something that we really need to, to provide more time in the curriculum as well? So, we're looking at scope and sequence, as well as the curriculum, we might be, we might have taught it, but maybe not as extensive as we need to.
Teachers don't have a lot of time to do this stuff, so that's why we're doing this. Christine's working with the math specialist department chairs, so that we can provide all the information for our teachers, so they can use it, so that's kind of, that's one of the greatest things with MCAS Explorer, of us who've been able to do this, and then we're going to transfer it over to the classroom, so we'll be able to use that information to them.
This was all done manually before this, the, the power of this is just phenomenal.
So, understanding that the test is obviously administered once a year, so you're getting these datasets once a year, and change can take time, right? So, you're, you're identifying now some things that might need to be updated or changed, but that's probably not going to really be reflected until possibly next year's class, so when you're looking at some of these scores that aren't in the range of what we're looking for, I feel like there's two different metrics you might be looking at, one, did we go up, and two, did we get to our 50% or above? So, what is the expectation around getting us, like, looking at, again, like, at the sixth and eighth grade math, what is the expectation and time in regard to, like, are we going up and are we in 50%?
So, part, no, it's a great question, part of the work that we're doing tomorrow, and as well as that's introducing, but also looking at it over the, the long term, is really looking at those lever points, we're looking at our, our scope in terms of what is taught at certain time periods, knowing that we still have half a year left, and identifying those specific standards in which that, our students are not performing at where they should be, and really making those adjustments now, so we don't have to look at this as a postmortem, for instance, that we are looking at, we can tell over time, so that three-year chart in terms of overtime, and we can compare our performance over multiple years, so we know if there's holes in the curriculum, we know there needs to be adjustments, so we're working on that now, it's not something we're going to wait till the end of the year and make new adjustments. And then also just analyzing the overall curriculum itself, identifying if there, we do need to go deeper, we do need to adjust, those different pieces in terms of work with the department chairs that will happen in the summer, as well as the math and ELA coordinator as well.
I think the key point is adjust, right? We're not overhauling everything because of some of the, some of the data points, because it's not a lot, it's just a few data points, a few gaps we've identified that, as Christine said, either we're not spending enough time on, or we're not spending any time at all on, based on what we're doing in our curriculum, so I think that's, and again, if teachers don't know that, they can't change their practice, that's what we're trying to do, is get that information to them, so they can make some of those changes, but I think we, we plan on doing it right away, you know, it's just really incorporating, it's, a lot of it, I think, is something that they're already teaching, but it might be something that they spend one day on, but maybe need to spend three, something like that, you know, I think that's what we're looking at and getting the feedback from the principals, department chairs, and the teachers themselves.
That was always the issue within gas, was the multiple, how long it would take to unpack that data if we could get it unpacked?
And they're getting better and better with giving us the data, you know, before you'd have to wait forever, and it was way too late, now we're getting it in, in a way that we can use it that year and make adjustments for.
Well, I think that's why I asked about the benchmark assessments, if they're reflecting similar, you know, so, I guess it is, I want to believe that, you know, people are adjusting on the fly, right, to meet students, you know, you know, with those gaps, so, as much as possible, understanding.
Assesses, especially in the middle school, standards-based, right? So, we will be able to do a comparison in real time versus waiting and doing analysis over the summer, for instance, we'll be able to look specifically at the analyses in terms of the, where our students have performed on, on specific standards, and then, again, what adjustments that need to happen. Part of this also, the overall work that's being done is making the data more consumable and more accessible. It's hard to describe in terms of how locked down in your ways, and you know what I'm talking about, in terms of, it just was really, the data's there, but it was really difficult to share, and with the effort, this tool and these other tools that are developing as offshoots of that, we're making the data consumable, or making it usable, so teachers can, can use this on a regular basis to adjust their practice, and providing them the support in the forms of data literacy, but also providing the leaderships as well with the tools that they need in order to, to work on a regular basis, so department meetings, for instance, or grade level meetings can have these discussions as well.
You know, reinforcing the good stuff we're doing, right?
Yeah, so this is super important.
There's a lot of good points in there that we're excelling at, doing really well, and it reinforces the good practice that we're already doing.
It's really an important point, in terms of, overall, we are above state's SGP across, and in many places that we're doing phenomenally well. and in many places that we're doing phenomenally well.
Thank you for doing this, because I know I was one of the ones that asked for it. But I guess my, like, struggle or concern in trying to understand the student growth stuff is like, we want to be above 50%, but if our scores were high, we could just ride at 50%, right, and stay where at? Because it's kind of weird, right? Because the only time you get a high growth, like if you look at this, there's a dip to like, the only time you get to 60 or 70% is just because the grade before wasn't as strong, I guess.
Sometimes.
But I mean, like, whenever we're going to look at this and be like, great, we got a bunch of 80 percentile, because that means the year before we fell on our face.
That's growth percentile, so you'd want to see the, your average score percentile could be going up.
Remember you're going after, you're in that cohort of kids all over the state, who's not just our kids.
Yeah, so we want to keep going.
Sometimes there's, there are kids that, we went individually, we have, we have students that earn the 90, 95%, whatever, I'll remember the 99, right? So you can say, well, the next year they take it, how much more can they grow, right? But some of them do. You know, some of them are in the 90s and the next year they're in 70s. So that, which is, is lower, but still really, really good. So I think the fact that there, that was one of the things that the state tried to do to mitigate that is by putting the cohorts of kids in the entire state together so that it's not just a grade that didn't do as well and the next year their, their growth would be higher because that grade didn't do well. So, you know, the seventh to eighth, so the, the sixth to seventh with the larger growth because the sixth didn't have as much growth.
Right.
The part that the state puts it in the cohort almost eliminates that to happen within a school.
Yeah, still trying to like wrap my head around that piece of it. I understand that it's the whole state core and all that, but I just, the big growths are obviously after like, not as big of growth in the year before. The only other question or I'd like to see or whatever is the subgroups. It's like IEP slash 504. I'd like to see those separated just because, you know, if I'm on an IP, I, so I don't know all the words we use here, but like Learning Center, whatever, I have a special educator. And 504, I think is generally a very different experience. So I'd like to see those broken up just to see.
Our tool groups them together. I can, I can probably tease them out of looking at the other data.
Yeah, the state puts them separate, I think the tool puts them.
The tool, exactly.
Okay.
No, I guess, very, very different.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
For sure.
I just had a, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm done.
No, I was just going to say, I assume we have the same information for science.
No, actually, very good question. Because it's a amalgamation of multiple years. And science is only within grade five and grade eight and grade nine. They don't, they don't calculate it.
They don't calculate it the same way. Okay.
That's a very good question.
Our science MCAS score were very high, right? Figure that last, we presented that last month. I have it right here somewhere, but.
Across the state, I, and leaving, off the top of my head, but I believe in 10th grade, I think we're number three in the state. I mean.
I have it right here.
Yeah.
How is the, generally speaking, either the leadership meetings or, I'm more interested in almost department level of teachers, like how are they responding to having this level of access?
It is, the tool has been really well received again. I mean, many of our, I will say, many of our department chairs and people have with them, they've actually created their own charts. It was just more rudimentary, but to have it here is just a really powerful thing. And to have a conversation around data with the tools as powerful as they are, which allows us not only, and we've shown the ones, the terms of looking at things across, but we can actually drill down and look at individual students as well and see the performance. So it's, it's, that has just allowed such a great level of discussion where we're really trying to problem solve and really think and also celebrate the wins too in terms of, wow, what a great performance. What are some things that are happening across this grade that we can bring to the other grades as well? So in the leadership meetings, to have those conversations really start broadly and then we talk about the phenomenon that we see in terms of what are some best practices and things that we can share with others? And also what's some areas of focus that we might be seeing in the certain areas that we need to make some adjustments on? And those are replicated very similarly with department chairs. So in terms of when I, when I meet with, with the department chairs or the coordinators with the building leadership. And then also that's replicated at a department level. So for instance, I had recently a conversation with the department chair who really talks about these. We look at the data as a team. And conversations is this is not just a single year's person, you know, in terms of if you teach 10th grade, that is not just the responsibility of the 10th grade teachers. Let's look at it as a department in terms of things that we can do for best practices and make adjustments or celebrate the wins again.
That's awesome. I mean, thank you for bringing it together.
No, thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Christine.
Okay.
The tool's status says available to us. Make sure our tool is, it's free for this year, but we're hoping that it stays that way.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Christine. Budget. Right, our next meeting is a public hearing. So we'll have, we'll have the budget completed and the so-called superintendent's budget done by then. Right now, Michael and I have been working on, again, trying to focus on that kindergarten and trying to do a three-year phase in for no costful of the kindergarten. So that's one of the things that is impacting and really impacted the 5.99%. So we're working to get that down and a plan to bring to you for tuition for the next two years that will allow us to gradually get to no tuition at the end of the, open to the third year. So that's what our plan is right now. And I think we've, we've figured it out and we'll have it all for you at our next meeting. We'll also post the entire line of budget online like we have done in the past before the next meeting. So if anyone in the community wants to take a look at that, they can do that. And you folks will get your budget books. Michael, one of the budget books going to be done? Okay, so budget, you guys will get your individual budget books. You'll have that prior to the public hearings. You have all that information. But we're still, we're still going. One of the things we really want to do is include some of the positions that principals and directors ask for us. The 5.99 did not include any of that. So we're trying to back up some of the other expenses and costs we can get, at least, you know, honor some of the requests that they've, that they've made. Some of them have been in there for multiple years, some of the requests. So we'll also, on the 25th, share with you what did not make the request. You know, there will be some that did not make it, but typically, school committee will ask me, what is not in there? So we'll put a slide in there to make sure that you have that information that's not in there. But still plugging along and I think we're, we're going to be a lot closer to the Warren Committee go with 4.1% than we were December of 5.99.
The news is reporting the governor is making some pretty big cuts.
I saw that, yeah.
Will that affect us at all?
We have not seen anything on that at all. Typically, D E S I or Superintendent's Association will put something out for us. Commissioner is meeting with us, I think, next week on Wednesday. I have to check my schedule. It's either this Wednesday or next Wednesday the commissioner's meeting with us. So if it's going to impact us, he'll talk to us that way.
Okay.
Hopefully it does not.
Right.
We're flush with all those revenues and the surplus last year. Now all of a sudden we have to make cuts. It doesn't seem like it was really manageable, so hopefully. I won't impact us. Have to answer any questions for this.
You say the 25th, is that our next meeting? Is that what you said?
25th, yes. Thursday, 25th. And that's the meeting that we have in, in the auditorium.
Right.
I apologize in advance, I will not be able to attend.
Andy, we, this is just logistics. Are we keeping that at the six or seven? We advertise it for six, so it's already been put out for six. It was in the patch tonight and it will be hometown weekly the next three weeks. So it is advertised and posted for six.
Who said we're going to get a book or something?
You'll get your budget book.
18th, something like a week. All right, thanks.
The school building.
Sure. So the SBC had their first meeting since the MSBA news. I think there was collective disappointment around the information. We kind of spent the time talking high level on some things we can start doing. So we talked about doing a demographic study, which is partially a request from an article that allocated the funds that we got at town meeting in 2022 and how that money's going to be utilized. So it was kind of for an independent, comprehensive school enrollment and capacity analysis. So Dr. Marzen and Michael are going to put together the request for proposal. The SBC will meet again a week or two to decide if we're going to go through with that. But we'd be putting that out there to kind of start checking that box, so to speak. We asked our chairs to reach out to the MSBA to talk a little with the MSBA on some things we can be doing to help us now for when, or if we reapply. And then we had some high level discussions around hiring a third-party designer or architect that would be able to potentially do a few things for us. One, really assess what our options are and the costs associated with them. I think after the MSBA news, if you looked, spent any time on some social media sites, you could see there was still a divide and some chatter that kind of insinuated that we haven't really moved that much since the vote. So we could be hiring a designer or architect that could be, you know, really assessing what the options are, what the cost looks like, what does an ad rental look like? What are maybe some other creative solutions we can think of? And just really spelling it out for everybody. They also can, if we ask them to, they can run some surveys or some visioning groups to just kind of help get that community engagement piece going from kind of more of a neutral third-party and really just helping the community kind of come together. So yeah, that's kind of where we left off right now. So I don't know, Jeffrey Leo, if you have anything to add to that?
Communications committee meeting tonight.
Okay.
Right now.
Michael and I have been working on that. I think we'll have a draft to you guys by the end of the week. That's what we're hoping. So we'll get that out and whatever changes anyone, you know, wants us to make, we'll do that. And I think, meeting on the 17th at the next meeting, we added another meeting in January.
Oh, the brief one for the new meeting, yeah.
You may have said it, demographic study versus the third-party study.
It is a third-party demographics study.
Are those one and the same?
Yes.
Well, we talked, we talked a little about separating them because the designer or the architect will be looking a little bit more at like how to use the building, how to use the buildings that we have and possibly running surveys and visioning statements or visioning sessions to kind of help bring the community together. The first part that Dr. Marzen and Michael are working on right now is a little bit more about the enrollment, the capacity and the demographic that we'd be servicing.
So we have data from NSDEC, they do that twice a year for us on enrollment and demographic. And we have this, whoever gets the bid for this will do one. And then we compare and contrast that. And then we also have a few years ago from MSBA. So we'll have three different data sets on enrollment going forward. So it'll give us a pretty good sense of where we are. I mean, I can tell you that it won't be any, I don't think it will be as high as what NSDEC and MSBA looked at four years ago. I can't imagine it would be, just based on what NSDEC is, their numbers have come down to about a 5% increase in student enrollment over the last, for the next 10 years. And when they were doing it four years ago, they had a 15% increase. So, you know, certainly COVID changed a lot of things and the numbers have changed. And we do have that COVID bump of kids coming up the next couple of years. But overall, it's going to remain around the 190 to low 200s per class. The latest projection we have, but let's see what the, you know, I get concerned about the impact on state hospital and, you know, whatever development happens up there. Even though it was, it's only projected to be 64 students, I think, you know, that seems like that could grow. So I think it'd be good to have another set of eyes on it, looking at the data and telling us what they found.
And then the next MSBA SOIs due in April or March?
April. Yeah, it opens up next week. And then so you can submit from next week until April. So I think that will be something that you folks will have to talk about and SBC and the Slum Court will have to talk about as well. See what direction I want to go. What do I have is the tone of the SBC, that SOI, right? Like how much that energy, you know, how are they working on that?
I mean, they, unanimously decided we wanted to be in it last time and everybody said and agreed they would accept to be in the program if we got invited back. So I guess I'd be surprised if that tone had dramatically shifted from that. You know, one of the things we talked about on a high level was kind of the parallel paths of doing this research. How much research and work can we do on our own to make sure that we don't jeopardize getting into the MSBA program? That was kind of the other discussion that we had.
Yeah, like I almost, my second, I just kind of proved it, like the chair to reach out to MSBA to increase likelihood. I almost think of that, like you have a communications subcommittee. Like those are things like maybe that a group says, hey, how do we communicate?
Well, that's what they're working on now.
Confirm the need, you know, confirm the tone in the town, you know, just around that.
There was discussion around the idea of a comprehensive plan, you know, you know, because MSBA would be just for that building, right? So, and I personally did bring up the point about WELOC and having a solid understanding of what it is we're trying to put in place, you know, and other space constraints that may exist that are other buildings as also as a result. So, you know, yes, this particular group was brought together to focus on Dale. You know, although if money's just going to be expended, I mean, I think it's short-sighted to not have, you know, take the other available spaces into consideration, particularly the financial impact as, you know, what if we do need to have a pre substantial financial investment into one of our other facilities as a result? So.
We agree with the elementary side, right? As part of that, I think, you know, the intention was a little bit on the middle high school. I think people were supportive of looking at the elementary school as part of the Dale project, just in case we're looking at doing, in addition on, I know you had talked to me about that, some folks are talking about addition on memorial, addition on WELOC and getting rid of Dale altogether. So there's definitely some other avenues that we could go down. So I think if people are looking just at elementary, I think they'd be supportive of that. Exactly, I look at it, that, that, that sounds more in the categories, designer, architect, focused on how to use the space we have. Like, you know, while the SBC focuses on Dale, huge part of that is getting a guess, right? And like the rec building became a big distraction.
Well, I guess to that point, to that point, that, that came up from members of the committee as well to the question, well then, if that plan like expand two spaces so that we have four, four great buildings and we lose the need for the fifth, what happens to the fifth? Right? What's the, what's the plan? You know, and so that should absolutely be part of whatever.
I'm not a gig for that at all, just an example that came up.
But right, I mean, but it's something that would have been nice to have in the last plan is to have what, what could be done with it? You know, and I think, you know, understanding what the rights to the land are to be used because it was deeded land under certain use. And, you know, maybe having some sort of vision session around that from the town side. But the selectmen, I think, would have to kind of identify that.
Now that's helpful. So your communications committee, so they're having a.
I believe they're meeting right now.
I think it was six or seven.
I think it was the exact same time, I think.
Yeah.
And then they're generally, it's monthly.
We meet on the first Wednesday of every month, but we're doing an additional Zoom meeting to look over the RFP.
For the demographic study.
Correct.
Theoretically, they would be looking, right? They would be.
The idea would be we'd be voting on that, at that meeting to go forward.
And then it would be a follow-up, some sort of an RFP for a third-party design.
That would be a separate.
Yeah.
Okay.
The idea is to get some data sooner rather than later.
Right.
For the April date.
Right, yeah. Okay. That's good. Good update. Community engagement and communication. Michelle continues to be a machine in terms of the, the social. Not everybody always sees it all sometimes, Michelle. You work really hard for that each weekend. It's fun to see what you put out. So I know, you know, that's, that's ongoing. I think next week we have.
Informal conversation.
informal conversation.
Yep.
That's Leo and I.
Yep.
If I'm not mistaken.
Yep, Tuesday, 10 to 11.
Yeah, we're together, but Neil, it would be all effectively limits his policy. It's going to be.
One of you could speak to whoever had a policy question.
Take that off line.
Yep.
Something, but we'll clarify that. I'm not sure, and this is a broad, broader topic, if there are, you know, it allows us to bring up anything else around that.
Dr. Marsen has his parent guardian advisory this Wednesday.
Wednesday, nine thirty.
Yep.
Email's going out tomorrow, reminder. And those have been pretty well. Would you be sharing any of some of that MCAS stuff? That's what is a major agenda. The MCAS presentation. So Christine and I will be there tomorrow doing some of the first and some of the one you just saw. And then we have other. School start times. So we are currently going through the data that we got from teachers in December. And I am ready to send an email to parents to ask them to be a part of the process. But I wanted to just wait until we got a chance to talk about it tonight, but I have a, an email drafted that would. Invite parents, telling, telling parents what this committee is and what it's going to do and invite parents into that process. So I'd like just. Does that make a lot of sense to send that out? And I want to kind of get that going so that we can, we'd like to get our first meeting by the end of the month. We're going to engage teachers and students and administrators as well, but I have the email ready as well for, for parents.
I think that'll be a big one sooner, probably cut it on the calendar.
It's all ready to go. So I just wanted to get your blessing before I sent it out. Yeah, it'll probably not be as easy as changing our meetings from seven o'clock to six. And I do have, so I have the parents sending the email of interest to SC Chair. Is that okay? Uh, yeah, and I think we, yeah, that goes to all of us. Yeah, you got. And, and, but you're, you're the one primarily driving that. I'll, I'll be sending it, it goes SC Chair, and then I think, I thought we were going to have school committee members that would want to be on that committee to pick those parents. That made sense to kind of do that work. Yeah, yeah. Did you want to discuss who was going to be on that?
What's the exactly done from the teachers so far?
It's, it's a range. I mean, I think for the most part, people are fairly positive. But like with anything that's going to change their lives, they want to just think about how it's going to impact them. So I think that's a normal human reaction for people. I think there's, there's people that, a lot of people that see the benefits of it, of changing it to a later start time. There's, I think there's some people that might be skeptical and want to see what the data are around results long term versus just like. People that have done it for a couple of years and what other communities are, are feeling about it. So I think. People, they're just naturally skeptical of those kinds of things. So I think that's an important piece to get some of that information as well. But if you look, if you go online and look at other districts that have done this, and you look at the surveys they have online. I would say that ours are a little more positive than what I've seen online as far as staffing.
Just call it as Jeff, are our student growth scores going to beat Dover Sherbroyn's if we change the start time? So I think, you know, that's.
Molly, would, would you appreciate an extra half an hour of sleep in the morning or?
You'll get more than that next year, Molly, you'll be all set. You have more time, you know what to do with next year.
Is school start time something that's come up, like in the student population or anything you've heard anybody talk about?
I think middle school kids talk about it all the time.
Middle school kids talk about it all the time. Big topic of discussion.
There is no spare minute, there's no spare minute in getting Henry up from bed to the bus, you know. You're packing him up on the, on the way out the door.
There were a couple of classes at high school last year that were doing some projects on it. And there were students that picked this topic as a project. So I met with a few of them and they were very interested in if we have a, if the total of that possibly have a committee that they want to be a part of. So there, there's definitely some, you know, buzz about it with kids that have done, you know, some information gathering last year. So I think there'll be definitely people want to participate in the committee. Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that I let people know too. I started to see a theme around responses from staff members that. Maybe assumption that we're just going to flip times, because some districts have done that, they've just flipped times, and that's not where even. What do you think about doing that? Because to the point, kids, little kids out in the bus in the dark would not, would not go well. So I just wanted to let people know that we're looking at a different way of doing it, like other districts have done. There are some that have done the straight flip and then some that have really been. A little more thoughtful with the transportation piece and making sure that, you know, kids can. It's not just young kids home at two o'clock in the afternoon and old kids, you know, their practice at three thirty. You know, that doesn't work for families when the older kid's still at school and the young kid is home at two fifty. That's not working. Family dining for those who count on their older siblings to watch the young kids. But I think there's, you know, I think we're ready for some really good conversation and get moving. And. If the committee wants to make recommendations for, for the school committee that it makes sense to do, then we'll do that. If not, then we won't.
I'm very curious on the transportation. I'd be curious what, what the scenario is and what the cost impact might be.
Really no cost impact. I'll be that with the bus company about it, you talk to scenarios. Really not a cost impact. Only, only cost impact would be if one of the longer routes, you'd have to split them into two buses, but. Right now they thought they could go over without that. So, yeah, we sat down with them and. And if this letter's going to go out shortly, what do you think the rough statement is? It is, I put in the letter that it's a meeting monthly, but then. Other activities outside of the monthly meeting like research, reading, presenting in public meetings. Send out out there so they can see exactly. I would say a few hours a month.
How many characters are you looking for? Will, do you have thoughts?
No, volunteer, if you want to get in there. I mean, it's, it's, it's you and I, Michelle, right? We kind of dance, like, is that something anyone else has interest in or?
I'm interested in it, but I don't know. How that, right, impacts, I can be on it, but then if I don't get elected, I did full papers, but, right. Then we just have to have someone else step in, but I'm happy to do it as well.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking. We, I would rather at this point. Yeah, I was, I was initially thinking that. Not trying to appear.
I guess one way around it is. Apply as a parent.
Right.
I don't mind. Between SBC, I guess, yeah. I'm getting a similar boat, so.
Yeah, it's like, those are things that we, we have to continue to, you know.
Yeah, I mean, let's get the interest, get the folks, because regardless, that has to move forward.
Yeah, that's fair.
Right, that's just an informational item, so they do that each year.
Can I ask one question on that?
Sure.
That, so it said that Medfield had thirty-eight courses taken. Is this the high school, the high school classes where they can come in here and take online classes or is this something different?
Virtual high school.
Okay.
Right.
And so can you just talk a little about the kind of programming that comes in on those thirty-eight different options or? Maybe, maybe it's like ten kids taking the same class, but.
That's not, not VHS.
VHS we do to accept, Teka is, is through Teka. So these are online courses with a assigned teacher that they meet with. It's, it's, it's a few things. Sometimes it's, if there is an interest in a class and we, we don't have enough staff to. Staff it, but we have, you know, seven kids that want to be in the class. Well, probably not going to run that class, but they have it on, online, we can do it. Or if it's just someone that has a particular interest and has an extra slot there and they don't have a free period or they have a free period here that doesn't. Fit in their schedule, they can take that. It's a whole, it's a whole.
And those are synchronous, right? The Teka classes, where VHS is asynchronous.
So we, we don't pay for those. That's part of our membership, which is great.
Yeah.
Because those are. I forget how much, but they're expensive.
Do you ever see something where you're like, a lot of, a lot of students really want to take this one particular class and maybe we should add it to the program?
We've done that before. In fact, we. We have a teacher's contract now that is a set number. And if it goes beyond that on a VHS or a Teka, Teka, we have to add the class to next year.
Okay.
Timmy is trying to staff them a lot of times.
Right.
Right.
AP computer science was always a tough one.
Yeah, for sure. Moving along, we're down to. I think future agenda. Molly, we always, we try to keep you more involved. Before we go, or that could be a future agenda, how are we doing? Any other?
You're welcome to submit attendee items, Molly.
Yeah, we're not trying to put on this.
Yeah.
Did we miss anything?
How's your life, Molly? How's the, how's the high school?
It was good, it's good. I mean, it's been like. I was trying to think, I was trying to bring someone in English, my English professional is terrible. Then I was like, oh, you guys don't see my project yet? Yeah, I feel like everyone's seen it now. So basically like you're seeing it in, in like the class. Even like prior to project, if you know, people do, like, you know, like. So you can like do a project, you can do anything more. Like, I'm senior teaching, but like some of my friends are like building, like taking furniture. So everyone's seen an application for that. Well, aside that, nothing.
Yeah, usually they say yes.
But for the most part, they're just you.
I was an outside mentor last year.
You were?
Yeah. They were. I just wanted to be them. They, they went fishing all the time and they, and they, and they. They, they just took data on the water temperature and the weather, like all this stuff. And then they. Took all the pictures and they would send me all the pictures where they were going. I tried to tell them to go different places. It was really a nice senior year for those boys.
Like, there's such a lot there. There's some like writing books, but other people like. I think there's a group of boys like building a property or something like that.
You can do it as a group project as well, not independent.
You can do it alone or you can do it.
Okay.
You say writing books?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's like a lot. And a lot of people create podcasts, that's a big one. So you can like do anything. And then you present them, like the last season. For like, so in the last nine, my.
It was the middle end of May.
Yeah, yeah, we present like the last week. Like for junior classes. But since there's so many applications, they have to like get it done in like January.
It's really exploded the last couple of years. It used to be maybe fifteen or twenty kids told them out. Every year it gets bigger and bigger.
Yeah, I was creating my schedule today and it was a lot easier because I'm senior teaching, so I'm like eight twenty-five to twelve ten.
Budgetary decision, Dr. Marsen.
That's so fun, yeah.
It's fun.
It is fun.
There, actually, there's two things. And then we'll, we'll show, but I do remember my daughter, it was. They didn't like, it was like a sequential art, like a book or storyboard or something that they've been thinking about for the longest time with a couple of their friends. And we were talking about it, it's like third year and arts school, that's coming up. And hey, I remember that was the first time I did it. Like as a senior project. So it, it is pretty cool. And it was, it wasn't overly taxing, if I remember. But it was a really cool experience.
Really shine a great light on the senior project.
Yes, I was going to say, like, I feel like.
But imagine teaching eighteen-year-olds when they're into school or have their plans to travel. So it like keeps them moti, I was, I did it at Wellesley High School. I was like the coordinator or whatever the last two years. Yeah, keeps them motivated, give them something else to do.
Right, and they're picking something they're interested in, which I think.
Yeah, pursue a little passion project for a term.
We have to like write a blog, like update a blog every, I don't really know. I, I just like kind of like fit it in when I had like. To be here for like fourth period and then it was like I had like twelve fifty-five to two oh seven up there. I was like, please blog.
Maybe we should may have some of the seniors present them to you guys.
I served as a judge in North for a couple of years on them. They were pretty interesting, what the kids were coming up with.
Yeah, they, the, the other thing, not on the agenda at all, but I, you may have to refresh my memory. We were talking about maybe a snow day. Going on in my, in my family the other night. And I remembered, what, what the seniors did, how was it?
Because they didn't get one. Remember they didn't.
Take notes, Molly, take notes.
You know, Dr. Marsen, that was nothing.
So they, they hadn't had one because we had different cohorts going, cohort A and all that, so. Seniors, a couple of the seniors said, oh, would it be great if, I said, well, no one's ever asked me. Why don't you put a proposal together and ask me? So the senior leadership.
Hearing if the snow day doesn't happen.
They did a great job with it and.
He did start with the three storms he is tracking on the land next week.
Rain, rain, rain.
Yeah.
So that, that was good. I do remember, and I, I love that though. I, that was a few years back, but it was like, they teach us that in sales school. You don't know if you don't. Okay, future agenda items, and I think we've seen, but we're going to try, are we, we're going to be. Typically for those who haven't done it, we do the public forum. And then we do try to add, like we close that and then cover other topics.
Is this for the next meeting, you mean? Because this is the public hearing for the project, okay.
Yeah, public hearing.
Yeah.
So that, that would be, you know, you know, whatever it is, sixty or ninety minutes typically, depending on feedback focused exclusively on the budget. We close that off and then we stay in the auditorium and cover a couple of other items.
Okay.
And I apologize in advance, I, I have a professional engagement that evening that I cannot get out of. But with education, I'll be visiting with thirty superintendents in eastern Ohio. So, but I, but it does take me out.
So the district fees, I think, is, is one we can talk about further. We may, because Leo, I know that's one that you've also been a part of, the AP twenty, I want to hold that. The second one, which are after the school calendar out, it's kind of getting to that season. I think typically the district fees comes into the conversation after you guys take the budget over, right? So once you take that over and then. We look at ways to try to make it work. And I think the conversation on bus fees, technology.
We, we do, and we, we got a question about athletic fees, so I think that's, I think that's probably one whole regular meeting. Conversation. And revisit, and revisiting the bus fees, you know, like you said, I think the, and that goes hand in hand with the. that goes hand in hand with the budget conversation.
Right, so then, and then progress on the strategic, that's what we can describe, again, scorecard up, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so and that's, I think we, we talked about the next meeting. So unless there's anything else that you'd be, it's a good news, the football game hasn't started.
It's true, we've got five minutes till kickoff for seven.
Yeah, so unless any, does anybody want to motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.